Item 10B, adopt a resolution accepting the revised San Bruno grade separation archway design concept.
Great. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, tonight we are back in front of you with yet another iteration of the decorative arch feature on the San Bruno grade separation. We're very pleased and excited to see the progress of the grade separation structure, and it has progressed now to the point where I know the city council is aware that trains actually began to run on the top of the grade separated structure effective just day before yesterday on Sunday. So that was a significant milestone in the construction of this safety improvement in our town, and one which signals in a very tangible way the pending completion of this very long-term construction project in San Bruno. The item that's in front of you tonight is reconsideration of the decorative arch feature that, as I mentioned, has assumed the city council's attention on a number of previous occasions. Most recently, at your November 27, 2012 meeting, at which time, the city council made a final approval of the design feature and some specific elements having to do with signage and structural supports to the -- or decorative features associated with structural support to the archway feature. Tonight, we're back to you to discuss this matter in a little bit more -- at a little bit of additional length with several specific aspects of the design of both the arch and a couple of other of the area improvements associated with the grade separated structure. I want to call to your attention what those items are, and then I'll ask Mark Simon of the JPB to walk through the PowerPoint presentation that the JPB has prepared for your consideration. Last week, staff from the JPB returned to the city to discuss with us certain design features associated with the arch, and in particular with the structural supports that were recommended to you when you last received this presentation. At that time, the city council asked for a little bit more evaluation of those structural support elements that formed, in general, the shape of a W in the inside of the archway. And the JPB indicated that they would take a look at that and see if there was a way to make it not look quite so much like an alphabet letter, but something that was more generic and decorative. They have done that. I'll let the JPB staff identify for you what they've determined. In very short summary, the information that staff learned last week is that, in fact, as the design of the decorative feature has progressed, the JPB has, in fact, determined that the -- there are no -- there is no need for any internal structural support elements, and that, in fact, the W or some version of a W or anything can be eliminated, and you could just have a plain archway. And again, Mark will walk through that with you in more detail. But there is a need, given the timeline and the schedule that the JPB has outlined for this project, to work towards a decision fairly quickly. JPB would prefer tonight. So we want to make sure that you understand what the various issues are. Now, the second topic on which JPB is requesting your decision-making has to do with the location of lettering that would identify San Bruno. Again, a very important feature of the archway overall design in that part of our interest is not just to provide a safe transit of trains through the community, which was the original interest in developing the grade separated structure, but to provide an actual amenity, sense of place, and a little bit of an excitement about the entry to San Bruno. So including the name of San Bruno in a way that's clearly visible is important. The JPB will be looking for your decision-making tonight about exactly where the lettering should go. And thirdly, the JPB is interested in making sure that they have your final decision regarding the color of the interior illuminated glass on the archway itself, as well as the glass that was intended to be in a corresponding color inside of the -- or rather, on the elevator tower on the west side of the structure. So again, Mark Simon will include all of those items in his presentation. I'm sorry, on the east side. I'm sorry, the elevator tower on the east side. Lastly, and these items are also outlined in the staff report that you received, I'd like to call to your attention a couple of other items because as this design and development and construction process has -- is rapidly moving to conclusion, the -- there is little opportunity to make any additional changes to the design features associated with the grade separation and with the areas surrounding both sides of the grade separation structure. So tonight, the JPB is prepared to show you the design feature and landscaping along the east side of the structure and along First Avenue, an important element of the project because it is directly across the street from our residents who live on First Avenue and who have now, for a very long period of time, tolerated what must seem like endless construction. And then second, and very important, I believe, is your final determination about the design and features associated with Posey Park. If you've been down to the area of the construction recently, you'll know that the project is quickly forming up the shape and the features associated with Posey Park, which have included a water feature that is kind of like a waterfall river that runs through the area that is the new location of Posey Park. For some time now, staff has wondered out loud whether that feature is going to be remain an amenity, something that will look and operate nicely over a long period of time, or whether there's a possibility that that water feature may be something that requires more maintenance than the city is prepared to provide on a regular, ongoing basis. So I'd like you to, again, if you're willing to do that tonight, to take a look at the design of that feature and determine whether or not the water feature is something that we would like the JPB to continue to completion, or whether we'd like to make some sort of relatively modest design amendment at this point to provide a landscape treatment as opposed to a water treatment in that particular location. So with that, having outlined what I think are the primary issues associated with the grade separation, the design elements tonight, I'd like to ask Mark and the JPB staff to provide you with the detail in their PowerPoint.
Thank you. Thank you to the council and to the mayor for letting us put this on at such short notice. We are, especially when it comes to the archway and the aesthetic features, pretty much ending the design phase and beginning to enter into the construction phase, and that's one of the reasons why some of these elements have such a criticality to them in terms of how soon a decision has to be made. We are delighted that there's now train service on the grade separation. First of all, it's just a cool thing to see, but we're just thrilled that those intersections are now infinitely safer than they were just a few days ago. So thank you for all you've done. To reiterate, that's the last design we showed you back in November, the W, which I said stood for wonderful, but you said, "Well, maybe not," and the medallion, that's a rough drawing of it. I want to draw your attention before we move on to all the other angles and lines between the posts for the shelter, the posts for the railing. There will also be electric wires eventually. And so one of the things that concerned us is if you kept the struts, it's a very busy visual aspect to it, and that we thought, because the struts are no longer structurally essential, they are decorative entirely, that provided us some opportunities to try some different things. So there's the W again. And there's something we thought we could certainly recommend, and we think this is more elegant, more simple. It's actually remarkably like what we originally started talking about, God knows how long ago. But anyway, we thought this was something that we found very appealing. We know that the city wants to have its mark on this as a clear indicator of which town this is. We talked about the medallion since it was going to hang from the W, and there's no W, you have to find someplace to put it, and the best place to put it is on the grade separation itself. That little squiggle to the right is the Caltrain logo. And I should add, none of our grade separations have the Caltrain logo on them, so if you don't want it, if you want it just to say San Bruno, that's something we can certainly accommodate. There's another way of hanging the medallion. And then we started looking at some strut alternatives. We didn't do a lot with it, partly because of our concern that there are just an awful lot of other visual features going on. There's one version where we also incorporate the medallion. Another one looked like a V, and then we're back to what we thought the archway would look like in its final form if you approve this. So moving on from there, there's the elevator tower. We do have to have -- we've always understood that there would be some color to this, that it would be a complement to the darker green of the archway, so this is our proposal for how that ought to look. Next is the east side. You may recall originally called for a fountain, a water feature. Some time ago, we discussed with the council and the city staff eliminating the water feature and turning it into a planter. So this is sort of our general concept about what that would look like, and we do need sort of final sign-off on the idea, although there's still some opportunities to tweak that part of it. Next is the landscaping on the east side at first and at Huntington. And there are a couple of trees in the Posey Park area that were damaged by the construction. They were redwoods, is that correct? And we're replacing them with these trees, which will have some really remarkable fall foliage on them, some nice colors. This is the water feature at Posey Park, and it's hard to see. It's one of the things that's frustrated us from the beginning, and we appreciate the difficulty of providing these things to the council and giving any sense of proportionality, either with the archway or this. But this is the water feature. If you can see carefully or closely at the bottom, it flows over the edge in a couple of places. There's some fountains that shoot up, and it really sort of creates certainly Posey Park as a dynamic sense of place. Where are we next here? This is the hardscape. This is the -- I'm sorry, Clara. We had some discussion about whether or not to have curved paving or squared off paving, and if you see -- should be one more, Clara, the next slide. Go back one then. Go back another one. There we go. If you look at the upper left-hand corner, that pattern is repeated throughout most of the great -- most of the project for paving. It just creates this -- instead of squared off, it creates a sense of flow, it creates a sense of unity with the rest of the project. And I apologize for going so fast, but we did provide all this information to the council in advance in the hope that we could not take up too much of your time, and also give you a chance to look at this stuff in a setting other than this one, because as we know, it's a little difficult to envision what we're talking about. So as the city manager said, we do have some critical and important decisions. Next slide, Clara. We do have also a mock-up. It's a sectional mock-up that we'll talk a little bit more about in a moment or two, but we know it's difficult to fully understand what the lighting will look like at night since we're not outdoors and the lights are on. And so we want to actually build a model for a couple of sections of it, not the whole archway, to show what the lighting effect would be. That'll be -- that's actually at the site, and we can talk further about that. And then there's a last decision. Field Peoli, the design architects, recommended that the pedestrian and vehicular underpasses have some color to them. Frankly, none of us are thrilled with the color, and we don't think we need it, but since we've demonstrated it to you in past iterations, we thought we ought to make sure that you at least know what we're thinking about and give you the chance to make the decision. So the set of decisions that we're facing right now, the reason why we have to make the decision about the struts right now is we need to order the steel for the archway. Although the struts will not be critical to supporting the archway, they will be attached to it, and we have to order basically every -- we have to order the steel preformed in a way that will accommodate struts, or whatever you want to call them, those decorative features, if you want them. So we kind of have to make that decision. If not now, then very much resembling now. The next question, of course, would be the medallion and where you want that located, the elevator glass, and the water feature, the east side water feature redesigned to a planter. And there's another category of 30 percent design, but that's really an issue for the city staff to address. So happy to answer any questions or hear any responses.
Okay. Go ahead.
Mark, can you explain, and I can appreciate when you -- when the decision-makers or the designers were trying to simplify things, can you explain what we're looking at? We have some verticals there. We also have what appear -- I know what the railing is, the guardrail is. What about the other panels that are on each side of the arch, each end of the arch? Are those on the same plane, or are they the screens that are on the other opposite side?
Actually, what you're seeing there are the screens that are on the east side. I should add, by the way, one of the concerns the council had in the past with the W or whatever it might have been was the accessibility and temptation it might provide to people to try and jump on the archway. This will certainly solve that problem. Is that correct? We do also have other staff here, Alex Jenkins from Asian TV, Ash Kalani from Caltrain, and also Raphael, with whom you're well familiar by now. But what you're seeing is what's on the east side. Is that correct, Raphael?
Yeah, that's correct. Just real quickly, the platform itself is actually --
You got to come over here.
Never been accused of talking softly before. The platform is actually semicircular in plan view, so the arch is actually closer to you than the grade separation. So it's standing off some distance. So in the past, remember, we were showing it actually flush with the grade sep. Now we're showing it away from the platform, and that was for the reason that Mark was talking about, was we wanted to preclude people from jumping on it or playing on it or what have you. So what you're seeing, yeah, on the east -- to the north and south of that, what you're seeing are the existing shelters, and then the vertical elements are the poles for the OCS.
Okay. So the shelters, I've seen that at construction, the west side shelter's structure has gone up, but not on the east side yet. So I would assume that if there were no arch, that that shelter would go in place of the arch? Is that what the plan was?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
If the arch was not there, if the arch was not there...
You'd see the shelters on both sides.
But would the shelter continue all the way through? Or is it just -- or is it just located where it is?
No, that's actually per plan, so there is a gap.
Would you please, Raphael, come to the podium and explain?
Right. So I guess the question was, if you didn't build an arch, would the shelters be the whole length of the platform? And the answer is no. It's a little similar to on the west side. You have some portions that are sheltered, and then you have some gaps that are windscreen, and some that are just railing, as you see. So really, all that's added to this image is the arch itself.
Okay. So there is no overlap of the arch and the shelter?
Correct. There is not.
And the only thing generally in that same plane of the arch would be the guardrails, which are down about four feet high?
Correct. The one caveat to that is if were there not a train in that picture, you would actually see the windscreen on the other side. But on the east side, that's a correct statement. There's the -- pretty much just the handrail.
Okay. Couple of -- and then I can get on to my comments on the actual arch. So the proposal from the designer is to have that mustard-colored paint underneath?
Well, yeah. But the only reason it's a proposal is because it's been in this drawing since the beginning. It's something we can pass on, or we can choose a different color if you prefer. There's also lighting underneath there, and that lighting does have the ability to control not just the brightness, but the color. Is that correct? Yeah. So you can affect different colors with the lighting. I mean, you can make it orange at Halloween if you wanted to, or if the Giants win another World Series.
Okay. And then the east -- the east side elevator tower is the only one we're talking about as far as colored glass?
Yes.
Because on the -- directly on the opposite side, on the west side, it's the same design of an elevator shaft, but will be clear glass or some standard type of glass?
Yes.
Okay. All right. My -- again, I can appreciate you feeling that it might be too busy, but as a designer and wanting to see structure, whether or not it is functional or not, I believe the struts are necessary. And my solution, and I've drawn on all of these sketches, was just to add another leg. Instead of a U, instead of a W, then you just come back down, because there was gap to bring down another diagonal.
So it looks almost like a trestle bridge?
Right. Yeah. And that, to me, is a more accurate resemblance of what that type of bridge would be like.
Okay.
Water feature?
Yeah. And as far as the color of the elevator shaft, I really -- it really doesn't -- it really wasn't something that I felt compelled to, you know, to match colors with the arch and the elevator glass, so whatever gets decided on that is fine. I'm fine with the change on the east side of landscaping in lieu of water feature. I really got to -- I guess that was one of our main concerns. And I really don't understand the paving pattern, why, you know, I almost chuckle when I see the explanation that the paving pattern was modeled after an artichoke, so I think that's what's really busy, you know, in the paving. So I think that could, you know, cost-wise and simplification, I think, would be better with the paving.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we go through?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, just to follow up, if we keep the W and just add two more legs, then you're satisfied with the medallion being where originally was proposed in the middle of the W? So I just want to make sure I understood you correctly, Mr. Barra.
Okay. So why don't we do this? Let's talk about the archway first so we don't get it too mixed up here. So we have Ken's opinion of the archway. Rico, what about you? You going to pass? Okay. Irene?
Could you go to the plain one? Thank you. I appreciate Ken's comments, but I like the cleanliness of it or the elegance of just the plain archway, and I like where the medallion is. So I would leave that where it is. I like the green tinted glass. So there. And then the mustard underneath color, you can let that one go. I really -- I think part of what's deceiving is the concrete that's showing on this is gray, but that's not what it's painted now, and I really like the color that it's being painted. It's a kind of a warm beige, I guess. So if you just continue that, I think it would be even less busy. It'll be more uniform, so that's my opinion on those two.
And we could certainly have that emulate exactly what's on the sides of the walls.
Yeah. And well, and then if you do that, maybe make the medallion green so it shows up more. So the arch and the medallion are green, and everything else is the cream color.
Michael?
Well, I think everybody knows what my opinion is about the arch in general, so I won't dwell on that, but...
If you had to have an arch, what would you?
I think I agree with Irene's comments in terms of preference, of having a cleaner design, the medallion location, and the color as well. I had a question, though, regarding the cost. Now that the design can be done in structurally more simple fashion, is that going to somehow reduce the price? And I think one of the urgency items we talked about before was actually integrating the structure into the platform itself. It looks like that requirement went away, and possibly that buys us a little more time in terms of the construction of this thing. So being that we can extend the timeframe and being that it's a simpler structure, can we expect to see some savings?
Probably not. The fact is, if you look at the illustration here, you see that there are already -- there are separate independent footings for the archway. So although it's no longer attached directly to the grade separation, it does have its own support. That has its own requirements. You know, we won't know definitively about the cost until we're much farther along, but we tend to think that the estimate we gave the council in January is probably still the right ballpark.
Okay. And in terms of the structural stability, the city gets pretty windy at times, and without having that -- any support in the center, is there any -- have you guys done some kind of structural analysis on how much play there is on the structure and whether that's going to weaken the plexiglass that's in there and cause cracking that might make it...
Well, it will be a steel structure. But let's have Raphael talk.
Yeah, thank you. So, no, it's a good question. In order to make a self-supporting arch like you see there, what you actually have is there's a ribbon of steel that runs inside it, which is sort of the skeleton behind it, and then the cladding is aesthetic. So in order to accomplish this, we actually had to add more steel. That's part of the reason why I was looking at Mark saying, "No, the cost isn't going to go down," because we've added more steel into the arch itself, and we've taken some of the steel away from the struts. So we did look at the winds, and in order to -- exactly right, the wind is actually what governs the design in this case, and so we had to do a beefier steel section to account for that.
Okay. The price isn't going up either?
No.
Okay.
I like that little laugh. I do want to duly note for the record that, yes, it does get windy in San Bruno.
Rico?
As far as the -- start on the -- underneath the mustard color, not a fan. I saw the both designs on the arch. I do like the version we have up here as far as that, taking Irene's comments, the cleaner, less clutter. I also have a concern on the support as well. On occasion, it can get windy in San Bruno, and I do wonder, is that going to be to where it rattles, or -- I mean, I understand it's everything's great, just like the price won't go down, but it hopefully won't go up, but it's somewhere in the middle. So if that's the support mechanism that we're going to have, and then the wind comes and it's there, and I can tell you, if Councilmember Salazar's here, you're not going to be able to come back and ask for more money to support that better. So I still have a concern, too, on the support, as well as it's the vibration or true wind and all of that stuff.
We appreciate your concern. I don't know if we have a better answer for you than the one we've already given you, which is our engineers are comfortable that this is designed and structurally sound.
So does that mean you support the simpler one?
As indicated, yes.
Okay. I also support the simpler arch. I think the future electrification lines with any kind of W or M or whatever it is is really going to, you know, mighty it up, so I like it much simpler. I'd like the tunnel, the walkways lit with color. I think if we can establish a neutral color, it's going to be a lot easier to maintain with lighting and not paint. I also go along with the color on the elevator shaft, and I want the simpler paving. I know where we got that artichoke idea, but simpler paving's better, and I'm also in favor of the planter versus the... in favor of the planter versus the, the horrific future maintenance of some type of a water feature, which is going to be filled with all kinds of bubbles and ivory flakes over the years, so I could see it coming.
Green dye on safety.
Yeah. Let me see here, I had a question here.
So the medallion located on, on the, physically located where we have it on this drawing?
I do, the question I, well, the comment on the medallion, I'd like to see it fairly three-dimensional, so it stands out, so it has some, some shadow and some pop to it, not just a sign type of thing. So I'd like to see, you know, the lettering and, and the surround of the medallion actually stand out, so it really does say, you know, San Bruno and not just a sign.
Okay.
And as far as Caltrain, I think San Bruno's enough.
I second that.
It's not like somebody's going to mistake it for somebody else's.
No, they'll see that on the train going by, so, right, exactly.
Well, we understand that. We, we have been in support all along of the idea that this is something San Bruno can really make a statement with about itself, and so we understand that. It's why I made the point of saying we don't have to put our name on.
Good. Let me ask the, the council, the rest of the council, haven't, you know, chimed in on the, on the elevator color, also the paving and the planter versus the, the water feature?
The paving, I have the same concerns that have been raised by Ken yourself. The elevator, I'm in favor. Mr. Mayor, the way you had addressed it, I need to understand better the, the water feature. I guess I'm having a visual and I've been on the subcommittee of driving through and saying, just, it's an added feature. I, I understand what Jim's saying too, is that there's possibly a maintenance. So what is that cost? What is the cost of that versus that? What is not only to maintain it, but also, you know, I guess the city would be maintaining it, or is it, or would you?
Well, there, there are two different water feature related decisions. The one we're asking for tonight only is, the original plans called for a water feature on the east side with the subcommittee and through extensive conversations with the staff, we were directed and we agreed what's eliminated from the east side and that's why there's a planner, a set of planner boxes there, a planner features that we put in place and we showed you one of those slides. The question that the city manager is concerned about is the water feature in the Posey Park area, and I'd like to get to that after we deal with these issues, because the ones we're talking about now are the ones that we really needed a decision on as soon as possible, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate the fact that the council is ready to make those decisions, so.
Well, you haven't given us a lot of choice in that matter either.
What?
Every time you come here, you don't give us a lot of choice as far as time.
You've figured out my strategy.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we've had a lot of conversations about an east side aesthetic feature. I think this is not exactly a late-breaking development. But that being said, we, project continues to move along, as you know, and it's sort of time to make decisions about some of this stuff. You know, we're just working as closely as we can with the city staff to try and figure it out and we do appreciate the fact that we had to bring this to the council on fairly short notice. It's one of the reasons we tried to provide as much information ahead of time so that you didn't come here and see these things for the first time, which we've also been known to do. So I thought we were actually learning a lesson or two from our prior performance.
Well, I haven't had the privilege of sitting on the subcommittee, so I just figure, you know, when I have opportunities, I'll speak here.
You'll take them, yes, I understand.
Thank you.
It's like, you'll be very, so when you come to a fork in the road, take it.
City manager, have something?
I just wanted to clarify that the, there is a decision in front of the city council tonight to, having to do with the east side treatment at the station site itself, and it might be a good idea as you're moving towards doing here, Mr. Mayor, to take these issues one at a time. So you have the arch, you have the colors associated with the arch, you have the lettering, the struts. You also have, the council has previously made a decision to eliminate a previously proposed water feature at the station site in favor of landscaping, and the decision before you tonight is to authorize the landscaping as shown by the JPB in that vicinity on the east side of the station itself. Then if you could get to Posey Park, after those series of decisions, your staff would appreciate that.
That's Posey Park. Claire, if you could go back to the other one, which was the east side, there you go.
This
This is, this is what we're proposing in lieu of the water feature for the landscaping. And it's also in the materials.
And if I could, if I could interject, being on the subcommittee for 10 years now, I really do not recall any discussion of a water feature on the east side. So the discussions that have gone on through the subcommittee and, and leading up to tonight, I believe that, you know, we are, at least the subcommittee has, has decided that, you know, that, that the landscape replacement is, you know, is the way to go. With that said, the subcommittee and the previous committee of, you know, the Citizens' Advisory Committee, were presented with a design, a schematic design of Posey Park, which included a water feature, very similar to what is up on the screen right now. We've only really seen it in plan view. We've seen a couple of artist renditions of how it might look from a distance, but not in a lot of detail. I know that this, you know, there's, there's been some sort of pattern and then there's been a, a pattern of trees, you know, within, within the area, but not a lot of discussion or detail as far as how that water was going to travel and how it was going to spill, spill out in, in certain areas, so we're, you know, seeing all this, all this detail, you know, really for the first time in 10 years.
Yeah, we, I, I understand. It's true, the subcommittee did make it pretty clear that the east side should be landscaped and not include a water feature, and we proceeded accordingly. And really, what this is about tonight is to give you an idea of where we ended up with the landscaping, getting sort of final sign off on the idea that we're going to landscape it. There's still some flexibility, I mean, plants are plants. We can, we can make some of those decisions about what we plant there pretty late in the process. That's not a decision that's as critical so much as making sure that the council understands that we've proceeded with the direction of eliminating the water feature on the east side and putting in landscaping instead.
If I could also, can you expand on what sort of wall treatments we're, we're looking at? And are those the accurate colors that, that, that we're going to be faced with?
I think I'd ask Alex Jenkins to come up and talk about that a little bit.
Because I know we have, I mean, we have a very distinct pattern for the grade separation wall and how, how will that transition to the walls that, for these planters and, and the large staircases?
Okay, so what you're looking at, let's see, so if you look at the lower left-hand side, elevation A, you'll see that the, there was a water feature, there, there were a lot of cascading elements in there. Those have been taken away to sort of simplify the, the view of, of this area. The wa, the wall treatment is a series of architectural reveals, those horizontal lines that match the horizontal lines of the elevator, elevator glass. That also falls in with the, with the planters down below. The color is accurate. You know, it looks, it, probably the closest will be on, on your, on your printout rather than the, the, the screen, but that's pretty close, you know, which you can actually, if you, if you actually go out to the grade separation site, you'll see the color that they're actually painting the walls now, and that would be the same color as here.
It's the same as the walls.
Okay, so when you, when you say horizontal lines, is that formed in, formed in concrete or is it?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a relief.
Okay.
So we have four or five things to decide tonight. The arch, it sounds like four out of five would like the simpler design without the
I can, I can accept the simpler design.
Okay, all right, that's five out of five. There you go. The medallion centered there where it shows, is that acceptable? Ken?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Michael?
But, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to go back to your comments about the 3D and about the single San Bruno. I'd like to see that included.
Okay.
And green.
And green, I hear. I heard one person say green, yes.
Yes, what about green, guys? Because the, the rest of it's going to be, yeah, because the rest of it's going to be the color, this color, the rest of the concrete. It's not going to be gray, is that correct?
Right.
So you're going to have a, you're going to have this color of concrete with a not much different color medallion. So in my opinion, you should have something that pops out, which would be a contrasting color, which would be the green to go with the arch.
Can you, you can do part of that with a mockup and show us exactly what it looks like?
Yeah, maybe not with a mockup, but we can certainly demonstrate to some different color choices.
Or just a drawing of the thing, okay.
Okay, all right, so the medallion and the location we have decided. Let's see.
The elevator glass?
Landscaping, elevator glass.
Green.
Ken?
Light green?
Yes, everyone?
Yes.
Okay, you got that?
And it'll be lighter green than the, than the archway itself, because people need to see in and out.
Right, exactly.
The chief of police will tell you it's a safety issue.
Okay, the landscaping at the station site, that's acceptable to everyone?
That's the east side water feature redesigned to propose planters.
Well, we're talking about the landscaping at the station site.
Yeah.
This, yes.
No water feature. Okay, did you have something?
I just wanted to make sure throughout all of these plantings that we're looking at drought tolerant and plants that are, except are
Native.
Native, thank you. I was trying to figure out what word to use. Native to that microclimate or would be tolerant to that microclimate, because as you know, it's windy and doesn't get a lot, yes, it gets a lot of rain in Hawaii, you know, the sun goes and comes and goes, so.
What we plant is really a decision that we defer to the city staff.
Okay, well, I'm
And I know that they have standards and design preferences.
Our park and recreation staff reviewed all of the plans and based on their recommendation, JPB is changing all of the landscape design based on city's request.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay. And then the, is it the last thing, the Posey Park water feature?
Yeah, and that goes back to, certainly as Councilman Ibarra said, this has been something that's been incorporated into Posey Park for a long time, but we do want to be sensitive. It is a significant maintenance commitment that, that is on, according to our construction and maintenance agreement, is the city's responsibility. So we don't want to just barrel through without a full recognition that this could be something that can get complicated. We've all seen fountains that aren't necessarily well-maintained or that often don't work all the time. I don't mean to be pessimistic about what might happen here, but it is something to be, it, it should be factored into the decision.
Okay. Ken, Posey Park water feature?
I'd like, I'd like to, I'd like to keep the water feature at Posey Park. I'd like a little more information as to how, you know, how we're going to deal with maintenance. I also like to know a little bit more about how Caltrain is, I'm assuming Caltrain is going to maintain their landscaping, or are they?
It's, I honestly don't remember, but I think it's
Yeah, and how, you know, and, and if they do, what's your track record? I mean, what's, you know?
Well, you can go to our other grade separated train stations like San Carlos, it looks to me like we've kept it up pretty well.
And, and the thing is, yeah, and I've seen, I've seen maintenance at the other stations, you know, especially at the grade steps, I've been paying attention to. So those, those are ongoing things and so I just wanted to be, from my, from my knowledge, know, know better that Caltrain is doing this and the city is going to be asked to do this.
Honorable mayor, councilmember, just for clarification, based on our memorandum of understanding with JPB, JPB is responsible to maintain, including the landscape in the station. Posey Park will be city's responsibility. Will be city's responsibility, the water feature itself, or if will be replaced with landscape, then steel will be the city's responsibility.
Well, with, with that said, I think we need some discussion as to what, you know, what that's going to entail.
So we have a very
Staffing-wise, budget-wise.
We, we have a rough estimate that we can only verify for planning purposes of between $15,000 and $18,000 a year, is again a planning level estimate for the additional cost associated with maintaining the water feature. I would just identify that as, as, and again, staff has not engaged other than in reviewing the design for accuracy as, as, in, in terms of conformance with previously represented design concepts. The, we have not had the opportunity to do a detailed evaluation of, I heard tonight there, water flowing down the sides and, and fountain aspects of this that may, may present unknown maintenance-related issues for the city. We do not, to my knowledge, have any significant water features anywhere else in town, so this isn't something that we have a great deal of experience with.
I, I think it's interesting to have a water feature, but I'm not totally married to it because I'm just, it's unfortunate that we have to think about vandalism, that we have to think about the unexpected. And, and it, and it, and when I say about maintenance, and this is not the old Posey Park. The old Posey Park was a bunch of trees and a couple of benches. This is now a plaza that's going to need a lot more than just cleaning paper out of the water or something. This can be trashed in no time with papers and leaves and garbage and everything, and I think it needs some real, you know, significant thought as to how we're going to keep this image up of a clean, nice plaza area. And if it means sacrificing water to be able to have the city maintain a nice, clean plaza area as a gateway to our city, then I think we need to, you know, really make that hard decision.
Okay, so you're ready to make a hard decision? No?
We purposely divided some of these issues into two different categories. One were critical and you've addressed all those already.
Okay.
Others are important, which means that the, the time is running, but we don't have to have a decision tonight. I think it's eminently reasonable for the city to ask, what is it getting itself into in terms of maintaining this, this feature?
I was going to say, since, and I, that's what I thought Mark and you were saying, was on this item, I think the city manager said it too, that wasn't critical, we had to have a decision on this tonight. But I'm also interested in, for me, the water feature. I like the idea, I like something different, something to add the aesthetics and new in this community, but I also, and one as many people know with the budget, I, I want to have a plan and I want to know what, how, not you, how we're going to maintain it with current staffing and resources and funds. So, you know, I know there's a lot of technology out there and that we do have to think about vandalism, we have to think about graffiti, we have to think about site visibility and to make sure that things are out in the open, so I need to have more of information on that.
If I might, just to, for point of clarification, when is it that the JPB would need a decision if the city council were to decide that they did not want a water feature? What is your timeline for that decision?
Well, we have to start laying some pipes pretty soon, I would think. How soon do we need to know, Ron?
They don't have to fill.
It was nice of me to commit him to something that's not true.
I, I don't have, I, I can find that out for you, I don't have the exact scheduled date for when we put the pumps in. I mean, obviously the water feature is going up as we speak, so whatever else it would be other than a water feature would have to look a lot like a water feature. You know, we haven't put the pumps in yet. I could find out if we've procured pumps, but I would say that decision would have to be made very soon if we're going to, I mean, the cost escalates every time we order something that we can't use, so.
So very soon, is that two weeks?
All right, I'll go back and check, but yeah, probably.
All right.
Through the chair?
Irene?
I like the shape of what you have, I like the idea, I like the curve of it, I think it's a very elegant addition. I can, very concerned as the other gentlemen are that it's going to be a mess in no time. Remember the wind, remember the, the trash that comes, that gets blown down? Is it possible to keep the shape, to keep everything except the actual water part and maybe make those, make it into benches and put blue tile on the back so that it has that that look to it? I mean, if we say no water feature today, or even in two weeks, what are our alternatives? Just, you know, blank cement? What?
Well, I, I would think the decision's not all that dissimilar to what we just did on the east side, which is, it's an opportunity to landscape it, turn it into something that's more than just a cement structure that looks like it was meant to be a fountain and is just an empty box instead, but, I mean, as Rafael said, every time we change, and this has been in the, this has been in the project design virtually from the beginning, so that's one of the reasons why it seems like we're coming and telling you that you don't have a lot of choices, because these things have been moving along at pace.
The only thing I was going to comment, as far as, Irene, maybe it's benches, I would just worry about the situation we had at the former Posey Park with benches and where they're placed, and just to be, I was conscientious about that for other sites.
Why don't we do this, Michael, how do you feel about the water feature? Do you have a feeling right now?
I like the water.
You like the water?
I like the water.
Okay. Ken, you're still up in the air?
No, I, I'd like to keep the water, it's just that, you know, it's, it's been in, yeah, it's been here, it's been drawn for 10 years, but it's always been drawn like this. It's always been a bird's eye view, there's been, you know, you need a magnifying glass to really understand what's going on. I see it better now than I have in 10 years, is, you know, is seeing this slope. So, to say that it's been here, it's, you know, we're supposed to be the client, we're supposed to be the ones that are making the decisions on whether we like it or not, and it's almost as if I'm looking at it from a distance. I'm looking at it, say, this is what, you know, is this what you want? And so, well, jeez, can I get closer to look at it? No, you know, this is about as close as you can get, so. I can appreciate, you know, my colleagues here saying they like it and everything, but do we really know what we're getting? And I think if we make a decision that we keep the water feature, then we'll, 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 we'll love it, we'll, we'll get to, get to, get to keep it, but I still want to know what is, what is actually going on, because these are very preliminary-looking plans here, they're not really detailed, and they're not really giving me a good feel, giving anybody a good feel of, you know, how the space is working, so.
I have to agree.
And you're sure it's going to look great.
I'd agree with, with Ken, you know, we're looking at a, if you will, a schematic of this, and you're telling us that you have pipes in the ground and you're ready to put pumps in. Pumps in that show what? What is it? I mean, you kind of gave us an idea, but that's all it is, is an idea, and if, in fact, you could show us a little bit more detail on what's going to happen, where it's going to flow, how it's going to cascade, that would be great, then we can make a decision. But I still have a concern about maintenance, but, you know, maybe I could be swayed. I think you probably have your answers on everything else, well, except for the paving, I'm, I'm assuming everybody agreed to the, the simpler paving, Michael?
I don't like artichokes.
You don't, no, okay.
So, the simpler paving.
The simpler paving.
I like artichokes, but I do like the simpler.
So the only thing that's still up in the air is this, is this water feature, what it looks like, so we can actually make a decision on something that we can see, and I think you have to bring it back to us.
Yep, I understand, I think that's very reasonable. The, on the other hand, anybody?
Also, is there a designer? There is someone that has been working on this water feature, I'm sure, and, and that person may be able to.
Draw a bigger picture.
You know, be able to explain it a little better, you know, and, you know, and say, oh, the water's going to come here, and you're, you know, here, this sort of stuff, and you're going to, you're going to see water coming down, and it's going to look neat as it comes down, you know, to this section and such, so.
Well, we'll work with your city staff to get more, better information, better sense of what this is.
All right, yeah.
Provide you what you need to make your decision.
And I, and I also wanted to add that, you know, what, what's on the drawing, what's on the screen now, this is definitely what we were looking at, you know, way back when, as the treatment for a two-track alignment on, on First Avenue.
Right.
So, it's, again, you got to use a magnifying glass, but I, I believe that First Avenue residents are going to be treated with some nice buffer of landscaping and, and somewhat of a landscaped terraced hill.
That is another issue, is, is there consensus on this landscaping? And I realize, again, this is not the best way to show everything, this is all foliage and trees that were selected by the city staff in accordance with the city's own standards.
I think it reflects what we talked about many times.
I guess. Do the, thank you, do the different colors mean anything? Like, the blue-green means different vegeta, it just looks like circles and stuff?
If I might, Mr. Mayor, there are some pictures that we actually saw that the JPB has, that I think show a better, they show a street-level view of the landscaping along the wall at First Avenue, and since we're going to bring back the water feature at Posey Park, I think it would be useful to bring that back as well, so that you can actually, this is very difficult, this is very difficult to interpret, I would hate for you to make your decision based on something you can't really see.
That's a good idea.
I think it's a very good idea.
Right, yeah, okay, so, you have your answers on?
If I may speak to one more thing, Mr. Mayor.
What's that?
I know that some plexiglass and some perforated metal has been passed out.
Right here, right.
We've been talking for quite some time, and unfortunately, this is the best example we can give you, and I liken it to trying to buy an eight-foot sofa when you're looking at a three-inch square fabric swatch, I've never been very good at that. So I just want to reiterate that we are building a mock-up.
Right.
It's only of a couple of sections, one at the very top, so you get an idea of how thick it is, and one closer to the bottom, so you get a sense of the proportion of that. It's a scale mock-up of those two sections that will include this perforated metal, will include the, the plexiglass, and include the lighting scheme, so that you can come see it at night. It's in a protected part of the site, so that it doesn't require you to wear a hard hat when you go look at it or anything like that, and we'll work with the city staff to find out when it makes the most sense for you, either to go collectively, if you have to go as the city council, or perhaps go individually, I don't know if it qualifies as a serial communication, if it's us telling you something, but we'll work that out and have that information, and have that, that mock-up available for you to go see, so you can fully understand what we're trying to do with the lighting, and what kind of landmark it will be at night.
Okay, sounds good, so.
And it's, it's guaranteed not to rattle.
Not to rattle?
Yeah, rattle. I mean, there's a lot of components there, and now you're, you know, you got one steel beam, and now you, you're taking this plexiglass and, and metal sheet, wrapping it, and, and also with lighting inside, and it's not going to rattle.
So I've been informed.
Okay, before, before we do something formal, I'd like to hear from Mr. Rico.
I have one question back on the color of the San Bruno underpass, where was that mustard yellow or whatever? Have you decided, is there a potential to take the color that they're now painting on the, the structure and use that underneath the overpass, San Br, all the overpasses, so that you're not introducing another, another color? Just, that was my.
Okay.
That, that was my suggestion.
You're now painting, like behind artichoke jokes, you're, you're painting the surface of your elevated, that light cream color, whatever, use that and wrap that around, because you're going to do the face of that.
The same color as the rest of the walls.
Yeah.
Yes.
Through there, instead of a mustard yellow.
And then that still leaves the lighting, which provides a remarkable range of flexibility.
Right, exactly.
But, Mr. Mayor, if we might, I, I would suggest that we bring back three items to you. One is the landscape treatment, better, better plan-view pictures of the landscape treatment along First Avenue. The water feature and design landscape treatment at Posey Park, and thirdly, the lighting underneath the station site at San Bruno Avenue, in order that you can confirm your decision to eliminate the mustard-yellow color and be satisfied with a choice that is the, consistent with the rest of the arch, I'm sorry, of the grade separation structure, and you know what the lighting is going to do underneath that important area of the, of the structure.
Okay, I, I agree, and the, the item does call for adoption of resolution though, so should we do some of these items?
What we would recommend is that your action tonight, we will amend the resolution accordingly to capture the decisions that we understand you are making about the arch itself, the medallion with the words San Bruno, and.
Pavers.
The, the simplification of the pavers.
The landscaping of the station site.
The glass in the elevator, and the color of the arch.
Okay.
And affirming that we're redesigning the water feature on the east side to the proposed planter.
Right.
Landscaping.
Right. So we will, assuming that those are your decisions, as we've heard the discussion tonight, we'll amend the resolution to address only those items.
Okay, all right, Mark?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I think it would be a good idea, if you wouldn't mind taking a vote, to, to confirm those items related to the resolution, so that we can make that.
Well, it's fresh in my mind, I'll, I'll make that motion.
Okay.
To accept.
There, a second.
A second. Second.
Okay, there's a motion, a second, to accept the five items that the city manager just clarified. Any question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you very much.